All right, why don't we go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the high light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The real call. Thanks. Dr. Flores.
Here.
Mr. LaGrande.
Yes.
Matthias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Present.
Dr. Randles.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Slade.
Here.
Dr. Fowles, not here.
She's excused.
President Baker.
Here.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
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 Thank you. We'll go straight into celebrations.
Yes, President Baker, I would like to ask Mark Frost, Principal at Innovation Central, and Ron Gorman to come forward. They will share with us celebrations regarding the Boys and Girls Club.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
This is Evans, President Baker, distinguished members of the board. This evening, we are here to celebrate the 2015 Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year, Ms. Chelsea Flemings, a sophomore from Innovation Central High School. Established in 1947, Youth of the Year is Boys and Girls Club of America's premier recognition program for club members, promoting service to club, community and family, academic success, strong moral character, life goals, poise, and public speaking ability. Local clubs recognize members as Youth of the Month winners. The club also holds a local Youth of the Year competition for club members between the ages of 14 and 18, where one member is selected as Youth of the Year. Joining me this evening is Principal Mark Frost from Innovation Central High School. He will share some brief words and introduce the 2015 Youth of the Year. Mr. Frost.
Thank you. Mr. Gorman, excuse me. Sorry about that. Mrs. Evans, President Baker, members of the board, as you know, we have some really great things going at Innovation Central. We have some great programs, we have great community support, we have some great teachers, great families, but we also have many, many great students. And tonight, it gives me a great pleasure to introduce one of these students to you. As Mr. Gorman said, Chelsea was recently elected, selected, by the Paul I. Phillips Boys and Girls Club of Grand Rapids as a Youth of the Year, and she will tell you about that in just a second, but I wanted to tell you some things about her as well. Chelsea Fleming is a current 10th grade student at Innovation Central. She is an honor roll student with a cumulative GPA of 3.2. She currently is a class officer and a student council member. She's been an Ottawa High School varsity cheerleader for two years, and she volunteers with the Girls to Women's Club in Grand Rapids. Chelsea's full of enthusiasm and personality, she's a very good student, but an even better person. And I would like you to hear from her now about this Youth of the Year award. Chelsea.
I won Youth of the Year. Youth of the Year is where young leaders like me come forward and we show what we can bring to America, so we can make America a better place for the youth. The Youth of the Year is run by the Boys and Girls Club of Grand Rapids, Paul I. Phillips, and Seedman and Stahl as well. And I would like to share some of my speech with you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Chelsea Renee Flemings, and I am a sophomore at Innovation Central High School in the Health and Sciences Department. My goal upon graduation is to pursue a degree in speech pathology. I'd like to first start off by thanking the Boys and Girls Club for this exquisite opportunity to be nominated as a Youth of the Year candidate. I joined the Boys and Girls Club in the fall of 2012, where I later became a well-known helpful face to not only the staff, but members as well. Because of the Boys and Girls Club, I've accomplished several things, like making a cheer team for the younger girls at the Boys and Girls Club, and also helping out younger students. Throughout my time in the Boys and Girls Club, I've seen several different backgrounds and characteristics in which many of the members come from, which not only makes my drive to help the students within my Boys and Girls Club even stronger, but it makes my strive to help the students and everyone throughout America even stronger. The vision that I have for the youth of America is primarily set on students, mostly within the inner city, to cooperate with the police officers, because the incidents that happened in Florida and Missouri and also in New York are very unacceptable and intolerable. So the police need to gain trust with the citizens, so that we could build a better foundation, I think. You know, I take that back. As a matter of fact, I know that if there were more Boys and Girls Clubs within the inner city, that the crime rates will go down within the inner city. So we need to build a better foundation, so great futures can start here. Thank you.
Very nice.
And if I could, I just want to introduce the people who came to celebrate with Chelsea, her mother, Ms. Nikki Booker, and her sister, her sister Kamaya Rufus. Sorry, Pofus. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Great speech. Wow. Thank you.
Speech pathology.
Chelsea's got that poise thing down, Mark, and so, Mark, you can work with her on that poise. But as usual, good news coming from Innovation Central, so thanks a lot, Mark, for your leadership there.
Yes, we also have Ms. Marsha Warner, I believe she is Director of the Grand Rapids Public Libraries, and Roseanne Wall. Roseanne will also introduce a supporting cast. They are celebrating One Book One City.
Good evening, Mrs. Evans, President Baker, members of the board. It is with pleasure that I introduce Marsha Warner, Executive Director, Grand Rapids Public Library, and our Grand Rapids Public School Library and Digibridge Team. We have Jan Baker, Diane Clayton-Triggs, Cheryl Lofton, Diane Endres, and Ellie Carrickus Simpson. Through our partnership with Digibridge, with Grand Rapids Public Library, all our 5th grade students had an amazing opportunity to participate in the One Book One City program. And Marsha will tell you a little bit more about the program.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
One Book One City for kids started as a countywide program under Greater Grand Rapids Reads. It was focused on 4th through 6th grades, and over the early years, it quickly became a program embraced by art organizations. When the Digibridge Initiative started two years ago, the One Book One City gained, program gained both focus and purpose, and we're very proud of the current product. Each child in a chosen grade is given a copy of the book. Teachers are given resource guides and curriculum support. We hold activities in both the libraries and in the schools. This year, we hosted a scavenger hunt at the library and a family feud sort of event based on clues from 1968. This, the book we used this year, I brought a copy for each of you. I'll give you when we're done. The city commissioners have also read it. One Crazy Summer by Rita Williams Garcia. We held an evening program of presentations and prizes for the kids who participated at the school, a book signing with the author, question and answer session that was, the children did beautifully at interacting with the author, and it was very well attended by students. Next year, we'll be our 10th year partnering on this event, and we're thrilled to be hunting for funding for our next title, to be chosen next month. It's a labor-intensive project, but it is indeed a labor of love.
So as Marsha said, you know, the book that was chosen this year was One Crazy Summer, and all of our 5th grade students across all the schools, Grand Rapids Public Schools, received this novel. One Crazy Summer is written by Rita Williams Garcia, and that's, this novel has been named the 2011 Coretta Scott King Award winner, the 2011 Newberry Honor, 2011 Scott Odell Prize for Historic Fiction. It's a 2010 National Book Award finalist, and it was the Texas Library Associate Best Book for 2010. In addition, as Marsha mentioned, you know, together, we built teacher resources, a teacher guide, it was written into the curriculum, so it actually looked at the literacy standards as well for social studies and ELA to do the cross-content. Jan Baker created a blog, and so we had over 800 comments and questions in the blog, and this blog was for our 5th grade students, and it gave them a chance to question and communicate with each other across the district, to see, you know, the thoughts of students from other schools and other classrooms, 5th grade classrooms, and that was really exciting to see this happen and take off. The Grand Rapids Public Library organized an author visit, so our students actually got to meet the author. The Grand Rapids Public School Team, they organized an event, and this event included a student panel discussion, and Mr. Rick Noel facilitated that, did an excellent job. He involved students from all the schools. An art project was done, and then the author presented, our students got a chance to ask questions from the author and have discussions. And it was really exciting, so I really want to thank, on behalf of Grand Rapids Public Schools and our students, I want to thank the Grand Rapids Public Library, Mrs. Evans, you know, giving us this opportunity, Mr. Noel, Dr. Gano, and of course, our teachers and the Grand Rapids Media Library Service that really put an effort to create this event and put it all together. We have a small slideshow to show you, kind of give you a snapshot of that event and what happened. Jan, do you know what?
I'm not really sure. Let's see. Is there something I could like? Oh, there we go. And, oh. Thank you. That would help. Okay. Okay, so I'm not hearing the sound, not really sure why.
We're making our faces, like our body culture, and we're trying to like hone it, like what we, what we wrote, like we had "Naya" on the side of it, and then like "Pay for Kind", "Pay for Awesome", we're supposed to put all that stuff, and write our heads in our mouths and mouths, and try to make it look awesome and kind.
Do you want to say something in this here? Don't get too loud. Should be yours. Yes, I'm looking.
Every part of the book of One Crazy Summer is when they get on the airplane, right? Because, because Golden Gate Bridge.
And my favorite part of One Crazy Summer was defending her sister's little power, and my favorite part of it was when the salesmen are down, so you eat their sandwiches. So every part of it was when nothing tries looking, looking at the Golden Gate Bridge, and, and then the lady said, "Sit down, Missy." The part that I'm about to go to is, they said...
So I am a Big Mom, because even though you don't see her a lot, Big Mom is quite a presence in the book, because you have the white character who are very strong and very militant, so, so to me, when you have, when you have a character that is extremely on one way, you have to have balance, it's a writer's trick. So Big Mom kind of represents that balance, the opposite. So she, so she feels the opposite weight of the white character. So it's my way of being able to incorporate different points of view about the white power.
Well, she expected that she would be really loving and be sorry that she left, and like her ass eyes really comfort, really comforted her feet, and...
I like One Crazy Summer, I like about it because it's really, it has like a lot of crazy ideas, and it's, you can think about it, and there are a lot, not that much characters. I really liked the book because it seemed really interesting, and I don't think I've read a book like that.
Thank you. We love the book.
Are you done? Okay, for, just one final thing before I pass out the books. We had prize winners, and our first-place prize winner for expressing what their name meant to them, is that correct? Yes. I'm Jennifer Thayer, I'm a 5th grade teacher at Sherwood, and one of my students was selected as the blog winner for describing what her name meant to her. So I would like to recognize Tajanae Rosenberg, if you could come up. Would you like to say a little bit about what your name means to you?
Yeah. My name means to me, that means courage, and don't let nobody tell you that you're not good enough for what you would like to do. And my name means to me that you can have courage about anything you like to do.
Very nice. I would, you know, just like to add, this was a fantastic program. My students were highly engaged, wanted to do reading all day. They were, you know, very much engaged in the book and in group activities, and just really had a great time. So I just was very encouraged by the kids wanting to participate in the blog and even engaging in that technology. Blogs were new to many of my 5th graders this year, and this was their first opportunity to do that. So it was a great way to, to just bring in technology and reading and engage all the kids in my class. Thank you. Thank you. Very nice.
Thank you. So this...
I hope when you're done, you'll pass it on to somebody else.
Nice meeting you. Thank you very much, Marsha, for what you do to connect the library to their school, so it's been great. Now we can have a book club with the city commissioners, so. All right. Next, report the student representative of the board, and both students, I think, had something come up, so they are not able to make it tonight, so we will move straight on into public comment for any board agenda items. These are items reflecting a vote afterwards. Do we have any public, item, public comments?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move into the secretary's report.
All right. The KISB school board has nominations for the Kent School Intermediate Association of School Boards, executive board of directors, the current board members, whose terms will expire, are Mr. Ken Hornkicker from Godwin High Public Schools, and then Mr. Kim, I'm sorry, Tim Pornski from Kelloggsville, and also Mr. Ted Spanenberg from Combska Public Schools. All three incumbents indicated that they will run for reelection. These seats will be voted on April 16th in a KISB legislative dinner.
Ms. Slade, would you tell us what the KIASB is? So that for the board members that might not know.
And what you do there.
What you do representing...
I go to early, early meetings there, for sure. It is represented to all of the districts in the county, in Kent County, in Kent Intermediate School District. And we meet on a regular basis, and it's really to stay in touch with what's going on in the state of Michigan, Michigan Association of School Board Members, stay in touch with what we are all doing, and they have some really excellent programs. We just had one at the Downtown Market that was great on math. And so we, we do programs and invite other board members, and it's a good way for all of the school districts in the ISD to talk to each other and know what's going on and support each other in our work, so that's basically what it is.
Yeah, and if you don't want to make the 7:30 a.m. meetings, the...
You know, it's a good thing it's close to my house.
Yeah, but the, I would encourage you, whenever people, if you haven't been to one...
They're really good.
When they do have the evening event and discussion, the food is always very good, oftentimes prepared by the culinary program of Kent County, for those who...
Kent County, and with Ferris State University.
With Ferris State University. Thank you, so...
Did that plug for you?
Thanks, so...
The food is really good.
And it is a good discussion, so...
It's great.
All right. Anything else? That's it?
Okay, I'd like to ask John Helmuth to come forward. He has prepared two reports, one regarding count day, and the second one around the superintendent's State of the Schools address.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans, President Baker, members of the board. I'm pleased to sit here today to update you on our, our winter-spring count day. About six months ago, we were here, and we did our, our fall count, and as is well-known, we had the single-best count day in two decades, very symbolic of the efforts of the GRPS Transformation Plan, and that third pillar of that plan was to restore stability to this district. Well, I'm pleased to report today that we've kind of doubled down. We had one of the single-best count days for fall, or for winter-spring count in at least a decade, if not more. Not only that, but this is a situation where typically, from the fall to the winter count, we lose somewhere between 100, 200. If I look back in spring of 2006, we lost 535 between fall and winter. In spring 2009, it was 317. Last year was 63. We are actually going to pick up 15 students this year. This is a first. This is, we will just want to take the opportunity, I know Superintendent Wetherall Neal wanted to thank our students, our parents, our teachers and school leaders that have been working diligently to implement our student retention recruitment campaign. This has been a district-wide and a community-wide effort, and our hope is that we continue this trend, and we are positioned to become one of the first urban districts in this state to return to growth after 20 years of declining enrollment. So, good news.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thanks a lot.
The second part of my report is just a reminder that the State of Our Schools Address has been rescheduled. It will be on Saturday, May 16th. Doors open at 8:30. Program begins at 9 a.m. It'll go till about 10 a.m. at Ottawa Hills, in Ottawa Hills High School. It is free and open to the public, there will be light refreshments. RSVPs are encouraged, but not required. They can contact Dana Bielke at 819-2193.
And what will be the communication regarding that? Will there be more communication later?
Absolutely, and we've put out, we put out a press release, we've put out a marker calendar, we'll do another follow-up with, with the marker calendar, so that everyone can save this date, and we'll keep pushing it.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Our next report is in regards to graduation rates, and Ron Gorman will be coming forward.
Okay, thank you. I was asked today to provide a high-level report on graduation rates, but before I do that, I would like to ensure that everyone knows how many schools are held responsible, or held accountable, rather, for graduation rates. So when you ask most folks, they think Union and Ottawa, City, U-Prep, et cetera, but let me read the list to you at this time. There are 14 schools in the Grand Rapids Public Schools that have graduation rates. City High Middle, Grand Rapids Learning Center, that's our program at Grand Rapids Community College, Grand Rapids Montessori High School, U-Prep, Innovation Central. Now, these may surprise, this one may surprise you, Kent County Correctional Facility has a graduation rate, KEC Beltline, Kent Vocational Options, Lincoln Campus, Newcomers School, Ottawa Hills High School, Southeast Career Pathways, and Union High School. So it's not just the, the schools, the comprehensive high schools, all schools have graduation rates attached to them if they have high school students. What's very important about that is, in some of the schools that I mentioned, students are on a certificate track and not on a diploma track. But if they're on a certificate track, and they finish and maybe go out into the workforce, if they did not receive that diploma, even though we knew they're on a certificate track, they do not count toward our positive graduation rates. They essentially count as a dropout if they're on the certificate track. The students in the Kent County Correctional Facility, Grand Rapids Public Schools is the entity that essentially runs the Kent County Correctional Facility from an educational perspective. Students who are attending neighboring schools, Wyoming, Kelloggsville, Godwin, if those students end up at the Kent County Correctional Facility, they count toward our graduation rate. So that's just a little bit of background information that I'm not sure everyone is aware of. The high-level reports that I'm going to provide today, and my hope is I can get into this in greater detail at Academic Achievement, graduation rates are, are up 5% in the last two years. If you focus on comprehensive schools, graduation rates are around 72%. If you factor in all those programs that I just talked about, the certificate tracks, alternative education jail, it's around 50%. Graduation rates for African-American students over the last three years have improved by 8.4%. Graduation rates for Hispanic-Latino students have improved by 8%. Graduation rates by gender, we typically graduate more female students than male students, but the male graduation rates are up 3.6%. Our economically disadvantaged students, which comprise about 85% of the school district, that's a 7.2% improvement over the last two years. And these are two things I'm very proud of, in two alternative education sites where we have typically graduated less than 5% of the students. The Grand Rapids Learning Center had a 12% increase this year, that's the alternative ed site that we hold that, that's on Grand Rapids Community College's campus, and then Southeast Career Pathways, which has always been less than 5%, is over 10% for the first time. An overview of all of the schools, Innovation Central had an increase in graduation rates. City had a slight increase. U-Prep had a nice increase, got over that 90% threshold. The alternative schools, both had increases. Ottawa and Union dipped, as well as Grand Rapids Montessori. Grand Rapids Montessori has, had 17 students that were eligible for graduation, and as you know, when you only have 17 students, it only takes losing a couple to significantly impact your graduation rate. So that's the best I can do from a high level. I can absolutely... Questions at this time, or we can save it for Ed Committee, totally up to you.
Ms. LaGrande?
Yeah, the Kent County Jail, those, do those individuals have the option to pursue a GED? And if not, why not? And, and also, can you tell me if they did pursue a GED, would that count adversely towards our graduation rates?
Absolutely. In the Kent County Correctional Facility, that used to be our, our primary route for students who were in, were in jail, because in many instances, they were so far behind in terms of credits. The state now, now holds us accountable. If a student receives a GED, that student is a dropout. So it adversely affects our graduation rates. It's probably, it's probably the right thing to do in many instances, because students are two or three years behind, and this may give students hope, but the system we're currently in, from a graduation perspective, it really dings us as a school district when we have students go that route.
Okay, can I ask a poll question, or...
Yeah, go ahead, if we should understand this.
Yeah, okay, so I get that we want our... Yeah, okay, so I get that we want our numbers to look good, of course. And, you know, the depressed stats on this.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate you getting rid of some of the static. I mean, that 50% number gets thrown around.
Totally, it does.
And if you're talking about what we think of as conventional high school, the number's more like 70%.
Correct. Correct.
I understand that and I understand the public perception issue. But can you tell me, are there practical, if we went to the GED route in the Kent County Jail, would there be practical adverse consequences for us as a district? Other than being able to say, hey, we have a graduation rate that's higher rather than lower? Other than, I mean, I don't want to call it bragging rights, but you see what I'm saying? Are there financial consequences to us or is it just then a perception?
In many instances, there are some accountability challenges where our, our school district needs to ensure that it has a graduation rate that goes over a certain threshold so that we're not becoming a priority school district, so to speak. So there could be, Mr. LaGrande, to your point, in some instances, I believe it's the right thing to do. And I believe our superintendent has shared that as well. If I'm in the Kent County Correctional Facility and I'm 17 years of age and I've accumulated zero credits, what's probably the better route for me? But as a school district, the minute we do that, that student counts as a dropout. I think of our priority schools. Well, they need to ensure that they hit these graduation targets every single year. If you think of what happened at Union High School, if you think of what happened at Ottawa Hills, where they had to reconfigure staffing as a result of not hitting graduation rate benchmarks. Now, maybe a different story in the Kent County Correctional Facility because I've never heard of the Kent County Correctional Facility being taken over by the state. I haven't heard of that. But those are, those are some things where I, I would, I would hate for our district to be held accountable for something that's really out of our control.
If, if, and again, I just, I would love to see us think about that issue more carefully, especially if we've got kids with no realistic chance of graduating. Having them play a game they can't win if we can get them to a point where they can be citizens with a GED track. I'd like to see us look at that as an alternative.
One.
Just beyond the scope of your report, I'm just saying that.
Could you clarify what a graduation rate actually is? When do, when do they become our student and when do they count for against us?
Absolutely. So when, last year's graduating class, so the class of 2014, if you go back to their freshman year, so they've got four years to graduate. The minute they step into a freshman class in one of our high schools, the clock starts ticking. They have four years and the summer after they graduate to be, after the graduation ceremony, rather, to be a graduate in the state of Michigan. Four years plus that summer. So if, if our seniors this year are maybe one class behind, if they go to summer school and make that up, they count for a four-year graduate. Now, this is where it gets a little bit messy. In order to be held accountable, a student has to be in our school district for two count days. When a student's in our school district for two count days, that student now goes on our books, so to speak. Okay? If a student is with us for one count day, that student counts towards the district's graduation rate. So it's two count days at the building level and one count day at the district level.
Meaning that the freshman year? Or at any time in four years?
At any time in four years. So if we, if, so senior year, a new student, a new student comes to Ottawa Hills in September. New student comes to Ottawa Hills for September, he, in September, he or she has gone to another school for three years, goes to that first count day at Ottawa Hills, goes to that second count day at Ottawa Hills. If that student does not graduate, that student counts against Ottawa Hills in terms of graduation rates. Okay? Now, our freshmen could be, some students, some students leave us, actually many students leave us and bounce around from district to district. When we send that cumulative folder to, let's say, Godfrey Lee or Kentwood or somewhere else, we need to ensure that that student goes to X school and goes to that school for two count days. If that student leaves us and doesn't show up anywhere, or shows up in another school district for one count day, still counts against the school from which he or she left. So it's, it's really complicated. Lots of people think, this is your senior class at the beginning of the year at Union High School. They had 280 kids or 230 kids. At the end of the year, you know, 150 kids walked across the stage. Oh my goodness, all of those kids did not graduate and they were all seniors. No, the clock starts ticking four years ago.
So then, if a Wyoming public school student enters the Kent County Correctional Center.
That's right.
In September of their senior year.
Correct.
That student would become a Grand Rapids Public School student after the count day.
You are correct.
And so then that, so that.
And it's only one count day for the district. So if that student's at one count day, that student is our student.
So that's, if that person is in jail from.
Correct.
Labor Day until, you know.
Yes, sir.
November, they're, they're our student.
That's correct.
Regardless of what they do afterwards.
You mentioned earlier that there was a degree and a certificate. Where do the certificates come from versus the degrees for students who are graduating? Students who are graduating and getting a degree, where do the certificates come from?
Well, many of our students with disabilities are on a certificate track and not a diploma track.
Okay.
That is, that is determined before they go into their high school programming. There is.
But they can't come off the certificate track and go into the, the diploma track, right?
I'm not the students with disabilities expert, but what I do know is if a student were to shift tracks, I don't even know if that can happen. My assumption is if you were to do that, let's say your third year of high school, you'd be missing out on many of the Michigan American curriculum courses in those first two years. Laura Lamore is the expert in that area. Ms. Slade can probably give some more input on that than I. But I just know that if you are on a certificate track, you may walk across the stage with Ottawa Hills High School or another high school. But because you're on that track, you count as a dropout.
Can that be changed or?
I want Laura to answer, she is in the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry, she's here.
She's been smiling back there.
I hope I've been getting everything right.
Shaking her head. She seemed to back what you were saying.
So your question is if a student who is, who has an IEP and enters ninth grade and has not been provided the curriculum necessary to be on track to receive a high school diploma, can that be changed? As we get smarter and smarter about curriculum and instruction, the answer is yes, but it's very difficult. We can do that through the use of personal curriculums, which the state is getting us more and more information about because we want to be sure that we are upholding the integrity of Grand Rapids Public Schools as well as putting forth students who really have a master and understanding of that content and instruction. It's unusual that that would occur. The majority of the students that we're talking about are students who might have some pretty significant autism spectrum disorders, some pretty significant moderate cognitive impairments. The more significant mild cognitive impairments, those are individuals with the cognitive learning needs for which a district the size of Grand Rapids has a good population of that. Additionally, what we end up doing is students who are receiving instruction from our center-based programs, we serve the entirety of Kent County. So they're not just students from Grand Rapids Public. We have 1,000 students who receive the most restrictive learning environment through Grand Rapids Public Schools at the request of the Kent County. So we serve those students as well.
I kind of get that. I just think that it's a little bit unfair to them to call them dropouts. You know, that's, that's.
Because they're doing their best work. We're putting in front of them some rigorous requests. It's the system we're in.
We've got to change that.
Okay, good.
Dr. Floris.
Mr. Gorman, you reported increases for African-American students and Latino students and male students. Just wondering what the base numbers are, African-American, let's start with, with white, Anglo-American and African-American and Latino. What are their, their graduation rates?
Okay, so I, so I have in front of me where we were in 2011, 2012 for our African-American students. We were 40.6 in 2011, 2012. 2012, 2013, 48.3. And this year for African-American students, we're 49%. So we made a nice jump last year and we're maintaining that jump for African-American students. Hispanic Latino students, 2011, 2012, 42.6. Slight dip last year at 41%, up to 50.6 this year.
And then Anglo-American or just?
I didn't put Caucasian students on the document. But as I said, in Academic Achievement, I'll bring a little comprehensive presentation to you.
So a couple of things is, one, we should be aware to articulate what actually the graduation rates mean, especially when those people criticize us for only having a 50% graduation rate. But secondly, it's still, what's, what's good about that is that we at least accept accountability for educating all students. And so, and we do see that as a goal. And, and then also that we, we still understand ourselves, the measurements that are useful, which is improving graduation rates for each of these groups, even once, once that taken into account. So that is our work. So anyway, thanks a lot, Ron.
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I, it's definitely an important conversation as, as a community for us to talk about what that means. You know, I'm sure with parents with IEPs and are wanting their kids to, to be able to go into the workforce, what does that look like and what programs are out there that maybe give them opportunities for the kind of work that perhaps their, their child might be capable of doing that are definitely out there. But I think as a community, we definitely need to talk about what that looks like, what it means, and then how we involve ourselves. I mean, we have to, as parents, make sure that we're talking to the principals and the teachers on, in regards to, to those issues. Because too often they, they just leave it unsaid. And then obviously their, their child runs into credit problems and now they're wanting to have something changed or change something about that. So it's critical that we start talking about that even more so. Especially with, with our gains of attendance and, and programming, we, we definitely need to do that.
Oh, Dr. Floris.
I want to sound positive here. I think that, you know, it's very positive that we're making strides in the right direction. But, you know, 50% is not acceptable. I think that we as a district owe it to our, to our citizens to improve upon that. And I'd like to see in, in forthcoming sessions, our plan to do that.
Dana, I want to thank you for requesting this information at the last board meeting so we could have this discussion, so. Alright?
I'd like to thank you for giving 45 minutes. Get to West Ottawa to root on the Ottawa Hills Bengals.
That's perfect. So if we end now, we can all make it.
Yes, I'd like to ask Dr. DeBoer to come forward. He's going to share information regarding G to G or grade school to graduation. Our superintendent, oh, I'm sorry, Annie Manuel Armstrong. And they will provide us a little background on the goals of the program.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Evans, President Baker, members of the board. Pleased to have this opportunity on behalf of the superintendent to give you just a brief overview of the grade school to graduation initiative and otherwise known as G to G. Manuel Armstrong and I are both members of the Steering Committee. I have just a few points I'm going to cover with the board and then we'll have to answer any questions you might have. So the G to G initiative actually began in the early months of 2014 through a series of informal conversations between Superintendent Teresa Weatherall Neal, Mr. Max Gibbs, a community-based district advocate, and Doctors Eric Williams and Andre Fields from Grand Rapids Community College. The main focus of their conversation was how to address gaps in economic outcomes for African-American males through the use of tutors and mentors. That was at point they were thinking about having those folks come from Grand Rapids Community College. They agreed that the project would focus on students attending Ottawa Hills High School and its feeder schools. Their conversations continued throughout the spring and individuals from other local institutions began attending their meetings. Both institutions included Grand Valley State University, the Urban League, City Sports, Boy Scouts, Cooley Law School and others. So during the summer of 2014, Superintendent Teresa Weatherall Neal invited me up to her office and briefed me on the initiative and said there was a desire on the part of the committee to formally evaluate their work to determine its effectiveness and its impact. I suggest that the committee develop a formal theory of action to define its purpose, intended outcomes and strategies. And I feel that that would help them clarify their work and also provide the blueprint for an evaluation. Over the mid to late summer months, we spent the better part of five or six meetings to review existing literature on the problem of disproportionate outcomes, to learn about the experiences of other school districts and cities across the United States in addressing this issue and to identify effective practices. We cited existing data in our district to learn better the scope of the problem. We identified key shared assumptions and beliefs about potential solutions and we developed a vision statement and both long-term and, both short-term and the long-term outcomes. This became the basis of our written theory of action, which I think the board has. This theory of action will continue to guide the work of this effort as we begin implementation. We will also evaluate our progress at each step and use the feedback to adjust and improve our practices. For example, we will survey participants of tomorrow night's initial training event to get feedback on its value to participants. We're already beginning to discuss and plan for the expansion of this initiative to include Hispanic males, again in that same Ottawa Hills High School and feeder school system. Before we conclude, I want to acknowledge the generous support of all our community partners, but in particular, the Presidents of the Kleinis College, Davenport University and Grand Valley State University for their personal support and the willingness to loan key administrative personnel to participate on the G to G committee. One of those key administrative staff is distinguished member of the board, Mr. Ross. So with that bit of an overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Would the distinguished Mr. Ross add to that?
Oh, would I like to add anything? No, nothing in particular at this point. And I'm sure Mr. Armstrong will probably cover anything that I was going to add. So I guess we'll just maybe turn it over to him.
Yeah, well, in a nutshell, we were, you know, we've been speaking with Mr. Gorman, Mr. Johnson and others around our graduation rates and the reality of where we are. And this group, G to G stands for grade school to grad school. And we're really looking at, you know, what can we do and what kind of impact can the community have with the children that we serve? We know that as a Grand Rapids Public School Systems, we only are a microcosm of our city. And so the philosophy around grade school to grad school with this initial, this is phase one. And like Dr. DeBoer said, we'll kick it off with our Latino and Hispanic community as well as our females as well. But the urgency that we saw within our, the current subgroup of African-American males, it was, it was a very vivid reality of where we are. And many members like Dr. Mr. Ross, Dr. DeBoer, Larry Johnson and others, we just, we understood as a community, allow the Grand Rapids Public School System to serve as a vehicle to truly engage through phase one, men in our community. So tomorrow's event will have Dr. Jomaza Konjufu, who is an educational consultant. I know you guys have heard of him. He's extremely distinguished. He's here right now and he'll be speaking with groups, I think, at Grand Valley State University tomorrow. And we were very pleased to have him come and talk to our community. It's open to men and women tomorrow. But it's really the focus on engaging a community, understanding what the issue is and, you know, us really leaning on each other to become that help. So with an initiative like this, we're looking to recruit roughly 200 men for phase one. And we'll partner these men up with feeder schools and feeder, feeder patterns with actual students who we just want these men to serve as accountability partners. We throw the word around as, with mentors, not necessarily loosely, but we, we understand that we want to hold the men accountable to the young men in this community. And we also want the young men to change some of our men's lives by, you know, being an asset and really seeing us cultivate the next generation of global leaders. And by doing that and having those kind of wraparound services, one, one goal of this is to positively affect our graduation rate.
What time is the event?
I have, I have flyers for everybody. The event is at 5:30. We'll serve dinner at 5 o'clock. We'll be at GRPS University. This is one of the trainings. And on March 31st, we'll have our second training. And when we get back from spring break, we'll start to pair up accountability partners with building principles and leadership.
I'm really impressed with the way the community is stepping up, so we need them. Thanks. Anything else?
I'd like to just say that I, at a previous meeting, I asked for data and I was happy to have received that data, read it thoroughly, was very impressed with, with the analysis and the direction that you're undertaking here. I think the heart of, of the issue really stems from our children not being as motivated to read and dealing with those and the data which demonstrated that. And I think programs like this to deal with that are definitely a good move in the right direction. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to add to that, Doctor, we, we're. Yeah, and just to add to that, Doctor, we, we're working with Mrs. Evans and the curriculum department as well, because we understand with accountability partners going into schools after spring break and not necessarily knowing the students, and the students may not know those adults, we are, right now, we're doing literature reviews on age-appropriate and reading materials. For one, we can, we know, the data shows that it can increase the Lexile scores, and also, we want to use literature as a backdrop to building relationships from, from men to students. So we are looking at that.
So you can do background checks on all the men that come, that want to be a part of the program?
Absolutely. Mr. Johnson has, has that covered. Wouldn't be any other way. And at tomorrow's event, at tomorrow's event, we have volunteer forums as well, and we've, inside our community, we know that there is an issue with volunteer forums, and Mr. Johnson and his staff have an appeals process that if there are any issues, that that can be done, you know, in confidentiality with his office.
I would like to add, though, for, for anyone who knows any men who live in the Grand Rapids area, please ask them to check, check this out on tomorrow night at, the old northeast is what I call it, excuse me. What do we?
GRPS University, 1400 Fuller.
Go ahead, what's the address again?
1400 Fuller.
1400 Fuller. But I, but I only mention that because this is, we've definitely reached out to men prior to today, but this is still an open event. We still are, you know, taking all men that are interested to learn more. As, you know, as Pastor Moody just pointed out, obviously, those men will be vetted before they're actually into the school buildings, but right now, we're really just trying to widen our, our reach and widen the net, so to speak, and get as many men as possible that may be interested, and let anyone know that they can be a group with young men from elementary all the way through high school, so depending on their comfort level. If they choose to work with really young children, that's fine, first, second, third grade. If they choose to work with older boys, 11th, 12th grade, that's fine as well. So there's a wide spectrum of opportunity, and again, just trying to get men out to hear more about this initiative and, and be ready to move forward. Just spread it around.
That's great. Wonderful. I thought you needed...
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next is the consent agenda grouping. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Tell them.
Support.
All right, Matthias take the roll.
Hey, Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. LaGrande.
Yes.
Matthias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randalls.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Faes. Excused, President Baker.
Yes. All right, that passes. We have no discussion items. We do have public comment for any item, agenda or non-agenda items. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
All right, superintendent's comments.
I don't have comments, but I would like to express my appreciation to the organizing committee of the Equity Conference today. It was an excellent conference. We saw, we had great numbers, and we actually received great information from our presenters. So it was well done, and I, I look forward to its continuation.
We'll start with board member comments, I'm going to start with Mr. Ross.
Well, Chelsea's not here, so that was my comment, just to Chelsea and her exquisite invitation and word choice, but she's not here, so I'll catch her at Innovation Central one day. So that's all I had.
All right, Reverend Matthias?
Just, again, want to encourage the public to engage in these kinds of conversations that we have during our monthly board minutes, and I know that we have some visitors as well out here, seem to be students anyway, so we're glad that you're here.
All right. Ms. Slade?
No comment.
No comment.
No comment.
I'd like to just encourage the public to get our kids reading, keep them reading, because they have to read in order to succeed. And I hope that we keep underscoring that, it's so important. And congratulations to all the readers and, and the outstanding people that we've had making presentations today. Very impressed.
So I would like to ask, are you all guests today? Or you, someone asked you to come here today?
These are journalism students from Park City University.
Okay, but you're taking diligent notes there, and no one else in the room is.
From what university?
See what you write up, you know? There's, there's a couple journalists in the back over here, you should talk to them when you're done, so. They ask us questions all the time, so you can, certainly, we got a newspaper. This is your publication?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right. I have no comments. We are going to, I'm going to ask Reverend Matthias to read us into closed session. There are two action items. However, we're going to get a closed session first. When we go into closed session, after we're ready to close session, we're going to go downstairs for the closed session. We will then go back into open session to vote on these two action items, and we'll stay downstairs. And if anyone is interested in the outcome of these action items, you can please wait downstairs outside the room until we're ready. So Reverend Matthias, can you read us into closed session?
Okay. Section 8A allows the Board of Education to go into closed session to consider the dismissal suspension, disciplining, or to hear complaints, or to consider the evaluation of a district officer or employee if the officer or employee requests a closed hearing. A majority vote is required.
To take the vote?
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. LaGrande.
Yes.
Matthias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randalls.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Faes, not here. President Baker.
Yes. All right, closed session, we'll head downstairs. No breaks, no, no snacks or anything.
Good.
Good.